Best test test. Okay, and I can hear and see you all. Good evening.
Good evening, Rich. So, um, I think the first item on our agenda is approval of our minutes for May twenty third. Does anybody have any comments?
I had one minor typo, Nate's, and that's named Nathaniel is spelled.
I could, oh, I didn't even notice.
It's an interesting spelling.
So how do you spell it?
N A T H A N I E L. I know that because in the fifth grade I spelled it wrong and I had to put it on the board for my little tongue.
That's all I had.
Anybody else?
It's wrong in my template, which is the reason I keep getting it. I apologize.
He be or Rich, uh, anything that you've noticed on the minutes that we need to correct?
No, I don't have anything.
If not, I'd accept the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move that they be approved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye, aye. You weren't here.
I think you can still vote to approve them, even if you.
I don't think it's, I think it's wise to probably abstain.
I didn't know what happened. You guys could have been having a party, I don't.
We have a zoning board appointment. Aaron, uh.
That's you. You want to introduce everyone on the board?
Sure. Um, I'm Rich Mengy, the chair.
I'm Tim Cook, vice chair.
I'm Vicky Smith, I'm a member.
He be Quinton, I'm an alternate.
And my name is Rich Brown. Yeah, I'm also an alternate.
And I'm Dave Robbins, the planning and zoning administrator.
Aaron, do you want to pull up a chair and join us? Be a little less formal. So, um. David, maybe you could explain the process, but I, I think it's. The select board or the planning board needs to make a recommendation or actually.
Actually do the appointment. So, um, for the zoning board of adjustment, there are five member board. Um, three of the board members are appointed by the planning board and two are appointed by the select board. And so we're trying to fill a few open positions. Aaron has volunteered to fill one of those, and so I'm looking for the board, ask the board to appoint Aaron as a full member of the CBA.
So there are no alternates that want to step up?
We have no alternates. We have three members. That's it.
Wow.
And one is having a baby next month.
Oh, okay.
She's going off, right?
She may ask to be appointed as an alternate, which the planning board appoints all the alternates also.
Okay.
Um, but she will not be available for a while.
Right.
Great. Um, had, did everybody get a copy of a brief bio from that Aaron supplied?
Yeah.
Okay. And so you recently got a zoning board approval for a solar array.
Sure did.
And how, how did that go for you?
Pretty well. Once we figured out what we had to do with just take the right path.
Yep.
Figure it out for everybody.
And, and since then, that's inspired you to be a, a, a member.
Well, I, I talked to David Pryor, and then we thought that it was best not to pursue it while I was in the midst of that. For all I have the right reasons, and now here we are.
Super.
Do you have any other experience with zoning or, um, well, with zoning? Like, you must, I don't think you've lived here like forever, so have you lived in other communities where you've received zoning permits?
Other, other communities lived most recently, and back home in Massachusetts, very similar process.
Uh huh. So you found it to be this pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same. Some of the rules are a little bit different.
Well, the rules are different. I just didn't know if you'd experienced something that you thought maybe we should bring into our process or something.
You know, it's other labs are bigger.
Yes.
Thing, so it's a little bit more cumbersome to deal with.
Uh huh.
Um, but back home, very much like this, a small party and.
Right.
Everybody was approachable and accessible. That makes it function.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, thank you for wanting to serve.
I didn't want you in favor to be on the board.
Yeah, I get, I would, I guess I just make a few comments. Um, I've never been on the CBA, but. My feeling is that I think one of the hardest things on the CBA is saying no. Because it's hard. I mean, people come in and, but.
They're your neighbor.
We never say no, no, there's no point in having zoning. So I think, and you obviously know that probably, but. And the other thing, of course, is knowing the zoning ordinance really well. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I've been through it a few times. I have a lot to learn the nuance. It just comes with.
Yeah, but those two things I think are really, yeah.
There is online training and several zoning state zoning manuals for orientation that, that.
I would take.
Helpful, yeah.
There's some, um, O E P has some training in there. They now have some webinars about it also. Or it's still O E P, I never.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what they call themselves now, but they change their names all the time, but.
You know them by O E P, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that was O S P for me, but you know, back when, but yeah, those are, I mean, I would highly recommend that just so you. You know, don't go in totally, I mean, you've had a little experience, but so you can feel a little knowledgeable. It's a lot easier. Than, I mean, your other choices, like reading this.
Yeah.
And it's a lot easier doing the webinar than reading the statutes regarding, um, zoning board.
Appreciate that.
So, uh, your schedule allows you to be free in the evening?
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be a little bit of things I'll have to do on my side, but I should make the majority of them.
Yep.
Yeah, because it's only once a month, I think they just.
The rest of the month.
Yeah, so it's not.
And every once in a while, for some reason, we have to add a meeting sometimes, another, but very rarely.
Yeah, because I think recently, because there've been so few members, I, I think there's been some backup. You know, it's been hard for people to get, get a hearing, I think, so.
We'll get everything cleared, although I have three cases coming up for next month.
Oh, boy.
Maybe a fourth.
Well, um, Rich, do you have any, any questions or? Anything you want to mention before we?
Thank, thank you, Rich. Uh, actually, no, Aaron, I think, um. Sounds, I think we're always happy to have people come volunteer their time for the good of the town, so thank you very much.
I don't think I have any other questions. I mean, I don't know that, yeah. So I, I guess at this point I would accept the, a motion to, uh, approve Aaron. Man Cuso, is that how he speaks? Man Cuso, um. As a zoning board member.
I would move to approve him.
That has. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All those opposed?
Great, congratulations.
Thanks. So, um, what I'm gonna have to do is tomorrow, I'll talk to the town clerk, she will do a oath of office for you. You'll have to come in, sign that before you can act as a board member. Um, the next meeting is the eighteenth of next month.
Okay.
Um, I was hoping. So, uh, there is some reading. I will send you some links to those webinars and stuff, everything, and then, um. If you want to come talk to me beforehand, I can kind of go over the formats of the meeting and what to expect, and then. Um, like, so we have one coming up the eighteenth, and Bill Malcolm has been, you know, Bill, um, he's, uh. Acting as chair, um, right now, and does a very good job leading the meeting, so it should be. Easy enough to start. Great. Appreciate that. Thank you. Oh, thank you, guys. Hey, I'm sure we'll have more responding coordination.
Good luck. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Hello.
See ya.
You're the green neighborhood.
Yeah.
Yeah, green shirts. Neighborhood.
So the next item on our agenda is site plan review for. U V S LLC, U V S S S. Are you Lauren? Terrific. I think we generally go through a checklist.
I have a fresh copy for you just to. As a chair to go walk through all the, those are basically all the items out of section expanded of the site plan leading regulations.
Okay.
But they're kind of split out too. So you can go, you can go through.
Lauren, uh, I guess maybe before we get started, you could, if you wanted to just summarize. What you are. What you're doing and what you're adding. Um, I think that would be helpful to us. I know there's a, a narrative in there, but. I'm unfamiliar with what the, what the rest of the facility, um, does or acts as.
So yeah, this is.
Yeah.
And so.
Hook your own.
With a barn on the property that previous, previous owner had wanted to turn it into more of an event space. But it just never realized, so it has water and electricity. Bond, which a lot of people looking for housing in the area, and got a great opportunity to do it, um, and. We've had a lot of, you know, we feel like we're making a good impact on, on. We call ourselves a place for people in transition, so we found like those people filling a really nice niche for people who aren't living somewhere, they're getting. They're coming to the upper valley for the first time. You're temporarily on a point, so we have our little niche. Uh, there is tons of parking. This, it used to be that this, this site hosted weddings and events and, you know. They host weddings or events, um, so I just showed the majority, so I just showed the parking that met the requirements, but we have. Gags and gags of parking. And so I just, I took the existing plans and just showed where the, the parking spots were that met the requirement, so that's all one of the plans. All. And then the other parts, the idea is to have housing or a bed breakfast unit and a garage in the barn. And garage for the tractor. And then we have a pad behind the house that we have a tiny house on wheels. And like to be able to use as a bed and breakfast evening.
So when you say a garage, where is the garage?
It's in the barn. There's already a garage in the barn, so we're just building some residential.
So which one is the barn? There's, there's one that says proposed one bedroom studio apartment. Um, on the plan.
That's the barn.
Is that the barn?
The barn is this small one right here.
So it's the lower one, okay.
That's the proposed one bedroom studio apartment?
No, it's two.
That's an existing barn.
It's an existing barn. All, it's all done. There's water, there's electricity. It's, it's just, we're. Doing stuff on the inside.
So this is.
It has septic. It didn't have septic, it had water and electricity.
So is there a new beach field going with it?
Yes, that's what the other design, the other. I may not have given the board the, uh. We have a septic plan.
Oh, okay. We're the big septic plant. Is that what this is? Yes.
For the, the larger septic system is already there. It's no longer proposed, it's actually, it's just. Yes, that is it.
And so the, what you call the house, um, is identified as proposed one bedroom studio apartment. On this plan, is that for the tiny home? No, no, the tiny home goes down by the main building.
These plans must be old, because some things are. I didn't have, I didn't want to, I, this, the guy who did the plans works for the town of Lebanon. It would have, it was like four thousand dollars putting plans together when all I'm doing is, is doing stuff on the inside of buildings, so I just use the, the plan that.
I got you, but I don't know what you're, you know, what you have here. I'm just reading what you gave me, and I don't like, I don't go down on your property and snoop around, so I don't know. So can you orient it for, for me, please? Thank you.
So, this is the main driveway. This is River Roads out here. Come down the driveway. This is the main house.
Yep.
These are existing parking spots. I just labeled them to show that they're part of an apartment. This purple one is the proposed pad.
Yep.
All right. This is the existing barn, and what we'll be doing would be work on inside of the barn. Exterior of the barn, the only changes would be the. Putting in different doors and windows, just because they're older, but the look of the barn, everything about the barn, other than that stays the same. So we're just doing stuff on the inside here, and here, uh, the connection to the water and wastewater is right there, so it's already, it's already there. Um, and so the idea would be this little thing would connect into the wastewater here, and then here would be the, the plan that we hired the engineers, and they developed a leach field for. The septic tanks and bleach fields, so that this would have its own separate thing. So.
So a thousand gallons and a fifteen hundred gallon. Tanks are for the garage conversion.
That's correct.
And then this, and the leach field, seven rows, that's awesome.
No confusion. That's, well, you're putting two units in the barn.
The barn, one upstairs, one downstairs.
And then there's a pumping stick, so that, that thing is pumped now up to the other one? Right. No. This house is on this septic system, but we're not talking about that at all. We're, we're leaving.
Okay, so that's a separate house.
This is.
The lowest one here.
That's right.
Right.
So we're building a free, completely standalone septic system for this new.
Okay.
Development.
And how many units are going to be in there?
There's. There's one up top, and then there's one down below, and then the garage, so the garage will be, um, our space, so it'll sort of be like three units, it'll be the garage, the apartment. Well, not the apartment, the bed and breakfast unit, the bed and breakfast unit.
So.
But the garage is a garage, it's not a living space.
Right, there's a garage, there's a, um, utility room, some storage.
Yeah, okay.
So this orientation really is like this, so the driveway comes to here.
That's correct.
And you have a deck off of both of the units? Is that what this shows, these?
Those are parkings, right?
No, 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 no.
There's a deck on the top one.
Yep.
And that's in planned view, so it's, it's showing the deck on top one, but there's not a deck in the bottom one.
So they don't have a patio or anything like that?
We'll probably do something.
And how do people get to the second floor? There are no stairs shown?
There will be, the, there's stairs going to the, the deck.
So they're gonna be exterior stairs, go to the upstairs unit?
Yes.
That will come off the front of the building?
Nope, they're gonna go in the back.
So someone's gonna drive up and they're gonna walk around, and then they're gonna go here and then upstairs?
There's parking down here, so they would, most likely they just walk up this, they just walk right there.
So they walk across the yard?
Yes.
To get to that.
And both units are full residential units with kitchens and bathrooms and.
We are.
I'm just trying, I'm having a hard time seeing the, finding the bathroom in the ground level unit, but upstairs ones are blue.
Color copies. I didn't get color either.
I got color. Must have been the one more made.
They're special, and yeah.
Copies, one at a different time when I did one, one was taller. I gave you a second copy that was.
Oh.
So make sure everyone had.
Okay. So I have a kind of a basic question. So it's a bed and breakfast, but no breakfast, and then I was. I had heard that this was kind of an extended stay as a, I guess I'm. I don't know whether it makes a difference to us or not, David, but, um, I had heard that it was kind of like. You could stay there for a couple of months or something like that.
Lodging and accommodations does not have, in the zoning board, does not have a limitation on time?
It just says overnight quarters provided to transient guests, and we don't have a definition of transient. So I guess you could, you know, instead of guests, you could, I mean, it, it. There's no limitation on how long a person can stay. Is that correct?
For you?
For you, you don't limit them in any way.
They, we, they can stay weekly or monthly.
Uh huh, but no limitation. I mean, if they want to stay there for three years, that'd be okay.
They just, we rent them a room for the month.
Right. By the month. Yep. And do they have a lease, or is it?
If they, if they request one, then we'll talk about it, but most of the time it's just, uh, at will.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, because you have some traveling nurses, right? They're, yeah, and they're there three to six months.
Right.
So, you know, I, I'm just having a little bit of a hard time. I, I under, you know, like, is this really more of a lodging accommodation, or is this really more of like a. Planed residential development with a bunch of different, you know, types of living situations and.
Sounds like it straddles the.
Yeah. And that's really not for us to decide. It's really a zoning question. The use is a zoning question. We need to see that this site. Uh, accommodates the use and that there's not impact to the neighborhood, but that's just, and our zoning administrator is here, so, um, he makes that determination.
Yeah, but if I'm seeing people coming into the town offices and trying to establish their residency. Then, yes, then I, that's when I have a problem. Because then I know that it's not a short term. Yeah, so when people are coming, trying to register their car, register their dogs, register to vote.
Putting their kids in school.
Putting their kids in school, then. We've crossed that line.
Yep.
Hmm, okay.
I don't think the school thing counts, actually. I think you can, a kid can be in school.
I'm just wondering, you know, at what point is it a multifamily development, and at what point is it truly a lodging, an accommodation? That's all because. We don't really have the multifamily development thought about in this way. So that's, I'm just wanting to be like real clear, um, in case somebody else wants to build something like this and do it new. I mean, it's, you know. Yours has evolved, you know, from like a slightly different emphasis on lodging than, than it is now, so.
I'm pretty sure if I go to the Hampton Inn, they're not gonna kick me out as long as I keep paying them for the room.
Right.
And, and that doesn't make it a, my apartment, you know, I don't think.
Right, well, does the Hampton Inn have a full kitchen?
Sometimes they have a one.
Yeah, 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 I, I.
A lot of housing literature. Does draw the stakes between short term and long term rentals.
Well, that's usually defined in the zoning ordinance, and we don't have a definition. We just say transient guests, so. Uh, if you're resident, you're getting your driver's, your car registered, and your dog registered, and your kid's in school, and that is what I. You know, but if you're transient, you're not intending to be here for a long time, and you're gonna. Move along.
In curiosity, do you know what the average only would stay of your, your guests is?
Probably a couple of months.
I mean, I know that the, you know, refugees stayed there, and I thought, oh, that's brilliant, you know, to be able to put people in there that need housing, and, um. I just want to be sure that it's legit and, you know, that, um, we're treating people fairly. It's really what it comes down to.
Well, can we, uh, uh, I, I think what we've done in the past is we've gone through the site plan review checklist, uh, to see. If, if we have a, um, complete application.
This would be a converted, yes. And is there, is there any problem with four point four six? We discussed this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So when we talk about that one, through the checklist, there's a very, you know, approvals from the CBA that can.
David, uh, am, am I supposed to mark this up to give back to you?
Yes.
Okay. So don't write it, don't scribble on it, okay?
If you want to scribble, I got extra copies.
Okay.
It's probably better that you scribble on it, because that's like you keeping notes. David's got it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we did.
Okay.
You know, it is, um, basically section ten of the site plan review.
Oh, okay, okay.
At work, talks about all the, the application requirements.
So names and addresses of each of butter, um, by map and map number.
Yeah, that's, well, came in the narrative, um. And look at the back page of that first application, um. On your very first page. And. Top page and look on the back of it.
Yep, yep, okay.
And so those, and with the exception of, uh, because the plans had Rod Finley's. A stamp on it, I needed to notice him also, so we added Rod Finley to the, the address list.
Okay. Um, names and business addresses of every engineer, architect, soil scientist, so on and so forth.
Yeah, there were two, there's, uh, the septic designer, Michael, and then, yeah, and then, uh, then Rod Finley puts the other.
And. From what I can tell, this is a record drawing from a project that was built in nineteen ninety six.
Yeah.
So I'm curious how Rod Finley can be. A submitting engineer on this.
He, the requirement is anybody whose professional stamp appears on the submitted documents, and his stamp appeared on the documents.
Okay.
So he gets a notice.
Okay.
So is that recently stamped it, or?
No, this is back in ninety six.
The old, that he's still alive and.
Working for Lebanon.
But this is not his plan.
This is his plan. What I did, I'm not so a professional engineer. I put on the gray, I put, this.
The colors.
It's colors.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I, I don't know how to deal with that. I have.
Are you an engineer also? Do you want to just float?
Yeah, I, I. Well, I was a PD. I'm no longer a PD. I retired, but, um. Yeah, I have concerns with people's stamps showing up on plans that are being used not for their original purpose.
I tried. I didn't realize, I told, I told David this earlier. I didn't realize his name was on it somewhere. I thought. You know, it's, it's whited out. I didn't realize it was on it. So I was surprised when David said, hey, I need to contact you personally, so that, why?
Uh huh.
And that, that was why.
Okay.
Because.
There's a stamp.
Yeah, I didn't see that, so that was my, my bad.
Um, because I guess I would submit that, uh, the references. Uh, that there should be a note on this plan that it was prepared by you, by the owner or whoever prepared it.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. It's still. Yeah.
We want Finley's original engineering for the footings of the stuff that's there, you know, the foundation.
Right.
Not gonna be affected, so.
Right, I mean, he is, this appears to be an as-built drawing of a septic system. Um. And it, it seems like it should be indicated that the base plan is from the nineteen ninety six plan as modified by you, the owner, um, and oh. Um, required approvals prior to site plan review.
So this is where, um, again, it's an oddity in the zoning, but if you look under conversions. It could be in.
Page twenty four.
Yeah. Uh, four, six, section four, six, four, um, since it, if the use is permitted in table forty one, this is lodging and accommodations, it's a permitted use. Um, then a conversion of all or part of a single building uh, to that use may be allowed. But then it goes on to say any conversion requiring site plan review, which is noted in table four one, that it is required. Um, must meet all the criteria of section twelve ten, which is refers to the site plan review regulations as well as the following criteria, and under A, it says, structures less than five years old or structures were not served by wiring, heating, plumbing, including sanitary facilities during the previous five years shall only be converted, shall not be converted to any other use than a single dwelling.
For five years.
Right, well, it's just for, um. We, we, right after the five years.
After five years, you can.
Um.
Right.
So, I, to me, that says that we cannot convert um, to lodging and accommodations because it doesn't have plumbing. And it can only be a single dwelling and that's gonna open up a lot of other cans of worms um, of having the mixed use on the property, you're only allowed one primary use, it's lodging and accommodations, you can't have mix. Um. Uh, dwelling units with lodging and accommodations, uh, because they're both primary uses. Um, so we run into an issue there that I said, I don't believe that, um, the conversion can occur. Um, I think it's maybe an oversight in the zoning.
What are you supposed to point at that once?
Well, the point was originally to prevent people from building a large building and then saying, oh, now I'm gonna convert it to six dwellings. It kinda gives the, uh.
So that's something that the zoning board could take up, right?
Yes, I believe that, that they, you know, I believe that there's a, a good, um, argument for a variance.
Um.
That the, the zoning is causing the hardship, not, you know, you could tear down that building right now and rebuild it. And, um, it's not a conversion, you're rebuilding it as lodging and accommodations, it's allowed use. And I wouldn't have any issues with it, it's converting of the existing building that I see is the, the issue.
Well, it also says that it needs to be served by septic.
Which we have a, a plan.
Right.
But it hasn't.
But it is served, it's not will be served.
Right.
Building is served, it's just not.
Right, yeah.
So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm looking for your recommendation, Dave, then, um, that we should be asking the applicant to, or we should be asking the applicant to apply for variance?
Yes, to the zoning board, but just, I don't believe that, um, we can do the conversion. Uh, that I can allow the conversion under the current zoning.
Okay, so we should be marking, checking yes?
Yes, checking yes for there is from the ZDA, and I don't see any other, there's, there's no special exceptions that are written into this. Would be a, a variance.
So that would be non-applicable then?
I don't, oh, yeah, for the special, yeah, not applicable.
And subdivision approval from planning board, this is not a subdivision?
Not a subdivision.
Okay. So once these, uh, units get, i- if they become approved in the future. Um. And the, and the owner or future owner wanted to subdivide or sell, say, this new barn duplex, what would happen?
Um, you'd either have to subdivide the land off completely, if you were trying to do it with, such as a condo. It could be subdivided condos as, um, rental units, so. You know, for lodging and accommodations, but it couldn't be, as long as it's on the same property, it could not be, uh,
Resident.
Residential.
Yeah, uh huh.
Now, there is a plan development and there, you know, although I don't believe plan development is allowed in the rural district.
Okay.
No, it's not allowed in the plan development, it's not allowed in the rural district.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, moving on to departmental review and written comments.
Yes.
Um, so I think the, the first item is, uh, first department is fire department.
Um, I believe that there should be a review by the fire department, um.
Right, I absolutely feel that way, um, I think there needs to be two means to be grass for anything that's occupied, especially that second floor unit. And, um, I'm also not sure what the floor plan of the tiny home will allow in terms, you know, if there's just one. I don't know if there's a loft situation and how a person would get out of there if there was a fire in the tiny home, so.
Well, as I'd like to have, uh, you know, Mike Hensley would be the one to do the review for the life safety for the fire, he's also the health officer.
Yep.
And so he would be able to look at this, so I do believe that.
Yeah, and then two other things, um, I want to know about the adequacy of the driveway that serves the current house and the barn um, for fire equipment getting there year round. And to make sure that, I don't know, flat or not, um, and then also it looks like from the original plan that parking has moved into the door yard area of the main part of the um, lodging accommodation and that we still have the ability for our fire equipment to maneuver in that area with parked cars.
Yeah.
So those, those are like, so the building safety and then the adequacy of the driveway and, um, just can they maneuver? And I don't know, why was the, um, place where the tiny home, you know, you've got that as a hard packed surface? Why was that hard packed surface, what, what's there now? Was that a turnaround or what, what was it?
Uh, just.
I mean, did you have a dumpster there at some point or? So, you know, I mean, parking, just, well, is it parking? I mean, it looks like a turnaround area, I don't know for whom, and people don't usually put in extra expense if you don't need to. So I just wondered what that little necklace for.
Well, in fact, actually, that brings up a question I had was, um, it looks like the, the plan, the, the original wastewater plan had the building, this octagon or whatever that is. It, it is, is it in fact in the area that you've got red, in red? And the, and what's shown on the plan is not correct from ninety six?
Vicky, looking at the.
Right, the red, the red.
Of that area, it looks like it's handicap accessible from that pad.
Well, if that's your handicap space, where are you gonna put that then?
The main entrance for the house is here.
Mm hmm.
Is, so these spots are in.
Oh, your handicap.
There's no change.
You're not, are they signed handicap?
No.
Uh huh, cause you probably should have a handicap sign up.
Wait, wait, wait.
This, I think, I think what you're talking about two different things, we're talking about where, up near where the tiny home is gonna be, which is the fifteen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unit, I think that's what you were asking about, Vicky, right?
I wonder why, who would waste the money on hard pack if it wasn't for some reason, I thought, well, maybe there's a dumpster there.
So is that a, is that the handicap parking space now?
I put the hard pack in just because I had the guy doing the hard pack and I thought, I wanted.
Okay, okay, so you really didn't have a, a reason for it, okay?
So are there handicap spaces up here?
There's no change, so it's, these are the, these are the closest ones, cause you, there's a ramp right here, so you'd enter.
Right. So you should have at least one handicap sign. Yeah, yeah, I mean, they're inexpensive and just to put it there, um, so that you're confined.
So we're looking for fire department, um, review, uh, highway department.
Yeah, and I just wonder if there's a fire, you're, there's no pond on site, right? They're bringing all the water to the site.
No.
Okay.
We have.
Oh, you have a hydrant?
No.
Oh.
Underground right here is a giant tank.
Oh, you have a cistern.
And that giant tank is connected automatically to all of the, the heads in the house.
So it's sprinkled?
And it's.
Okay, so it'd be just like, uh, if there's a call up to the barn or the house, it'd be just like a regular house call in terms of the amount of water they'd have to bring up to there. So I mean, that, this, this looks like a residential thing and I just wanted to make sure that, um, there was a source for, and it seemed like that's a bigger, um, structure and you might need more water, then it would be easily.
I don't know if they can pump from the river or not, is it too far?
No, it's too far.
Too far, yeah.
Yeah, but the cistern is there for that reason.
Or is for up here, there's, it's not in the barn.
Exactly, got it, yep, but that's nice that that's there.
But since the tiny home is up there, I think that.
The tiny home is down there, I mean.
Tiny home is right here.
This is where the purple is.
Right?
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
So.
I'm worried.
I, I would think that we should be getting, um, we should be getting information on what you have for, for the cistern and, and some, uh, some rudimentary information on that, you know, is it, is it, is it, is it building sprinkled?
Yeah.
Um.
Did you test that or does fire department come down and test that every year?
We have a contractor for multi-safety that come in every year.
Oh, good.
It's on automatic dial, the fire department.
Yeah. Perfect, that's great, that's good, great.
Okay. Uh, so getting back to highway department review.
Uh, that's something that's up to the board, um, I don't, you know, with the, the small number of units, I don't think there is, um, going to be that much increase on River Road, that much impact, so I, uh, would personally suggest the board waive that.
Uh huh.
Requirement.
Yeah, I'm good with waiving that too.
And we're not aware of any, I mean, it's relatively flat at the driveway entrance, so Scott doesn't have any issues with the driveway.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, we will wait, waive that.
Why don't we make a big list, but I, I, or, okay, if you wanna do it, I, I'll move that we waive it.
Well, let's wait till the end and then.
Okay, we can do it all together.
You vote to approve, you know, approve with all the waivers.
Yep, yep, okay, yep.
Typically how the board has been doing it.
Yeah.
Uh, police department?
Um, again, um.
I would want Sean just to know that there's no longer exclusively private use of that driveway and that there are lodgers up there.
Yeah, I, I think.
But just to let him know, FYI, kind of thing, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think he needs to, um, you know, do a response plan and then, you know.
Is, is it possible for us to get something from him saying, I understand that, uh, or?
The business use is continuing up there, do you live on that, on the property? So do you live up there, up that driveway? Okay, so there's gonna be some business use up near, near where Lauren lives and just, I, I would just FYI.
Okay, I can, I can tell, Sean, easy enough.
Yeah, 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 just so.
I mean, he could either say he has no comments or he can respond and say,
I'm just happy.
I've reviewed it and I, I have no comments, or I have concerns and you can list them.
So I'll just, I'll give him a copy of the application and ask him to.
All right.
Review.
Okay.
Uh, the select board? Review?
David, can you think anything that the select board wants to know about this?
Can't imagine, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Fine, so let's waive the select board.
Um, conservation commission?
I don't.
My only.
Well.
My only question would be, are there any, um, you know, as a result of big rainfalls, are there any, any erosion problems on the site or anything like that, um?
It's flat.
I've been in there for, putting up tents for those guys and it's dead flat. The field.
Yeah.
Well, why?
Yeah, I mean, this driveway goes down.
I mean, it's four hundred and seventy feet down to four hundred and two feet, so it's, there's sixty.
It's, it's a flat and then it's a super steep hill and it's flat and the septic is composed on the flat.
Right, no. Okay. Uh, so we're thinking we would waive that?
I, yeah, I would.
Okay.
I agree.
And school district?
No, no kids at school, so.
By by reason of the application being transit, that this is transient housing?
Yep.
So what happens if somebody moves here and they have a kid and they wanna live here for two months?
Well, I think they can put the kid in the school, which is perfectly fine, um, it's gonna throw up a, a flag to me if I, you know, I'm, I'm probably not gonna find out about it from the school, uh, because of the others. You know, it's what I start hearing, uh, you know, the, uh, what's gonna happen is that the county clerk's office is going to flag me if, uh, somebody tries to register a car or, you know, say, wait a minute, this isn't a, you know, this is a business, not a, a residential. And, um, they will, but I mean, so school district, I don't think is an issue for that, if you need to put your kid in school, they're gonna take them, I mean, it's not, right?
Yeah, presumably it would be for less than a year.
Right.
This is, this is all one address.
Right.
So.
So do we end up with findings of fact on this?
Yes.
And so one of the findings of fact is that there will be no impact to the school system?
Yep.
Uh.
It can be, that's what the board wants.
Well, in, we're making an assumption that we're not gonna have more than transitive guests, transitory guests there. Under that assumption, we can say there're gonna be no impacts. Right?
Well, I mean, it's being approved as a transitory facility, isn't it?
It's a lodging accommodation, yeah, but it says transient guests.
There could be an impact on the school though, if the kid's there for six months. You know, in the school for six months, I don't know that that's.
Yeah, again, you're, you're talking, you know, maybe one or two kids, that I don't see that as an impact that the school needs to make a, a statement and then.
Maybe we have the statement, we know that what their tolerance is, they can take one or two kids.
Right, yeah, that's only one of the, okay. Okay. Uh, so narrative summary of proposal, proposed use and associated building area for each use.
Well, we did get a narrative in the application.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's the yes.
Yep.
Days and hours of operation, number of employees?
No employees, they said that, and he said the hours of operation would not change.
Twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm curious, how, how do you not have employees, I mean, if, if you've got seventeen rental rooms, how do you do that?
I'm the, I'm the owner and I work really hard.
Uh huh, well, that's great.
Um, well, it would, I mean, if you have contractors, like, if you hire somebody to come in and clean. It's not an employee, that's a contracted service.
Right, it's not somebody that's there every day, but you need to.
Manning the front desk.
Oh, okay.
Or doing security.
Is that what you do for cleaning and things like that?
Is that what you do for cleaning and things like that? You just hire any contract?
Okay.
Don't work that. Hours in the day.
Uh, so that's a yes. Um, the need for utility services by type.
I'll bet that I couldn't find anything, but I was wondering if it, since, um. Well, the, the utilities are kind of set for. What's there, um, if it was something that the board could waive.
Uh, I would think that it would be good to have a site plan that actually shows us, because we've got. Um, I, I was kind of confused about the purpose of, uh. And connection of the wells, uh, apparently there's a non-fotable, uh, well.
Yeah.
Um, shown. Um. And. Since utilities are a requirement of the site plan, I would think that we would. Want to show, I mean, it, it is. You obviously have buried sewer, you have buried water.
Or is it electrical buried?
Is electric wat- buried.
Do you know where the conduit is? Or does it follow the roads, or?
Yeah. It's on, it's on one of the, and I just, I just really don't wanna hire a whole surveying team, a whole engineering to, to redo. Plans, and I'm just putting stuff inside existing buildings, that's, that was my goal, but I, I get it.
It should have been documented before, honestly, what we're working from is a, you know, water and sewer plant, not a site plan. And there should have been a site plan for this, so that's, I mean, and we're just trying to do the best we can also, but, um. You know, and I don't have a problem if you can clearly indicate what's going on here with. I personally don't care about hiring somebody, um, I just wanna know where these things are, and you could. You can do this, you've got the skills to be able to annotate the map. So that we know what's there.
Yeah, so right now, the electricity comes here, and goes down.
Uh huh.
So that's the electricity.
So there's pole, there's poles there.
There's a pole right here.
Yep.
So, and then it's underground here, and then it goes down here.
Right.
There's one well that serves the whole property, it's really, it has so much water.
Yeah.
When we had, we tried to chlorinate it once, we had a really hard time pumping it dry.
That's a good situation to have.
So that where it says propose, so what you would do is say existing drilled well, right?
Yeah.
You know, if you were to modify this so that we could, um.
This.
Oh, so that, that is the well.
This one down the hill, we, we're, it's a well cap, but we're not using it all. This is the well for everything, all the water goes to the house, it's all treated in a big fancy system, and then it goes down the hill, right here, in here.
Right.
And then the wastewater is pumped, the pump stays here, and the wastewater is pumped up and everything, all the wastewater goes here. So you have water lines, you have wastewater lines, you have electric.
Yes.
So none of that's changing, there's a big electrical thing here, so they'll just. Do the new service to the barn.
Is that a transformer, or is what you're talking about?
Yeah, I don't know what the thing's called.
Is it a big box?
Box.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably a transformer.
Yeah.
And so that will, uh, bring the, the separate line into that one. And then everything else.
So the barn already has power, though, right?
Barn has power and water.
So what are you saying about separate from the transformer?
So right now, this unit right here.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to separate it.
Oh, I see, okay, so separate service, I got it, okay.
All right, so there's poles down the driveway to where it splits off?
No, the, the poles come through the, the woods.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And then they stop, they stop back here, and then they go underground to the house.
Right, yeah, then, yeah, doesn't matter.
So, so that. Is not shown, and we would like to see that.
Yeah, just to have the electrical service. Where it goes, and. I don't, I, I mean, my personal feeling is, if Lauren can show us that, I don't need to have it surveyed, and, you know. But I, I just want it clear, and if you could locate the transformer too. Man, I, I know it's all gonna be about, you know, it's about here, but, you know, to show that there's a transformer there, that would be helpful.
And, and so maybe the note would say approximate location of buried, co- buried power.
Right, yes.
And transformer.
Yep.
And, yeah.
Yep.
And feasible without.
Yeah. You have, one, is there fiber?
We do, we have line fiber.
Does it come in on the electrical side, or is it come down?
Comes down the power pole.
Yeah.
And then goes underground.
Nice.
Um. So are we saying we just, we wanna show the electric service, do we want the, the internet, or?
Well, he could say, I assume it's in the same conduit, or.
Right next.
Yeah, so electric and, 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 uh, fiber.
And you also want of the water.
Yeah, and, and to show, like, just. On this plan, so that we have one plan that shows everything, um, to have, you know, where the new septic is approximately gonna be located. You don't have to draw. The tank is here, because we have a nice plan of that, but just to show the general area, that'd be good. And, so. Are you gonna create a pathway for the tenants and going to the barn? I mean, you're gonna have to. Well, wow, but is there a path?
But what I'm kind of thinking right now, this, this is a flat hole parking area, it's not currently used right now.
Okay.
So. The deck on this one will be about the same level as there, so I'm thinking of putting this cool old bridge.
Uh huh.
To connect the deck to the parking area.
Okay.
But I'm not committing to that, I'm just. You know, all of this. It's just thing, I, is, I wanna do all the planning stuff, and I don't wanna spend, you know. Gazillion dollars in time. I wanna make sure it's gonna get approved before I do all that, but my thought is, there's plenty of parking to park here, it's a really nice walk, you can see the river. There's easy, easy walk, either way. Um, so, it's not a big deal.
Well, I don't mean to be nosy, but if you, um, I am gonna be nosy, because what I want is the plan to show what you intend to build. So if you intend to put your, you know, a little parking area, you could say potential future parking area here. And, you know, connected with your little big bridge or pathway, you could say potential future, just so.
Okay.
Wouldn't, in ten years, when you come back, you know, we're not like, oh my gosh, had that happened, you know, we didn't hear about that.
One of the issues I have is that, um. I see an awful lot of parking, a lot of buildings, um, for commercial uses inside the rural district. Um, driveways and, uh, parking areas are counted towards your lot coverage. And I don't have, uh, an accurate number.
Uh huh.
So, um, anything new, I'm gonna deny. Any permit, you know, for new parking, for a bridge, because I don't know what your lot coverage is based on, so this is a good time for this site plan. And when we get down to the, the next item, that is one of the items that is sort of lacking in your site plan. Um, which is all the lot size, building footprints, growth floor areas, lot coverage calculations.
Is it nothing's changed?
Yeah, nothing's changed, but we don't know.
Legal.
We don't know what.
We don't know what, you know.
Problem with, with eighty-five Dartmouth College Highway, they came through for the subdivision, and it's like, we didn't have any of that information, we didn't have the baseline. So it's mainly. Document where we are now, and even if it hasn't changed, just to establish that, I, I mean, some of that's gotta be like on the tax card, right?
Gotta be envisioned, yeah.
Yeah, well, the, the buildings are there, but the, the lot coverage.
Right.
Um, you know, we don't have the, the driveways.
Okay, well, Lauren fortunately is an engineer, so he can figure that out.
Yeah.
You're in the right field.
How many, how many acres, yeah?
Uh, twenty-two, wasn't it?
Twenty-two, yeah.
But you're still going to max out at twenty-six thousand square feet of lot coverage, now it's all existing. And so, you know, knowing that number where you're at, just tells me, going forward. How much space you have left. Um.
Right, yeah, would be good, you, yeah, it'd be good if you didn't know that too, bro.
So it's at twelve percent, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's twelve percent or twenty-six thousand square feet. Whichever is the lower of the two numbers.
Right.
And so.
So we would like to, 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 to have those calculations provided.
Yeah, and also if he's, if you're planning on, you know, your dream situation is to have the parking there, I mean, I can understand, if you're here at the house, you don't necessarily want tenants. That, you know, right? You know, they should have their, and maybe they would feel the same way, not parking in your door yard, but having their own. Parking and, and way to their head. So I can totally see that, that's reasonable, so I would put that on there, and, um, anything else you think. You know, you'd want, and the other question I had kind of about pedestrian circulation is that. Pretty much these people never really have to go here because you're not serving breakfast anymore.
Correct.
So there's no reason to have signage, or any kind of lighting, or anything like that, because they're not. They're separate, pretty much, okay.
Right, so in terms of specifics here, uh, um, I think. Item D for lot size, um, building footprint, gross floor area and lot coverage calculations. Um, and then the other item is, um, identifying whether this is within any of the conservation districts.
There, there was some issues on past for, uh, egg soils, but I believe, you know, those were. Already resolved through the zoning board, since the building exists.
Okay.
Um, and I just would have to check the, the new parking area to make sure we're not adding. The parking in. Um, those, and that was egg soils.
Right.
Okay, so we want this, it's not, not submitted. Um, other information requested, uh, to assistant reviewing. Maybe we'll come up with that, um, as we continue down the checklist. Um. So traffic and parking is the next item on our checklist?
There's.
No, that's.
I plan generally that.
Well, there's, uh, traffic and parking was, the, the older. Um, checklist had neglected to have that, and they did use section.
Uh, the one David gave me here is.
Yeah, so.
That's traffic and parking.
Yeah, the traffic and parking plan is section, uh, ten-four. Regulations.
So provide a traffic and parking plan, including an estimate of the max hourly. Or other appropriate period is determined by a planning board. Uh, into and out of the present premises. Um. I've been to the sheep farm. That, that shares this driveway, is that correct?
It's an hour driveway, they have an easement.
They have an easement?
The son of it.
Yeah. Um. Are there any known problems, or?
I, I have not heard of any.
Issues?
Issues.
Uh. Uh, one of the things that I do think, I'm not sure where it would come in, is. I think since we're documenting what's there, we should have a. A, a, um, a, a description, or a section, or something of the drive to indicate that it's a fifteen-foot driveway, or a twelve-foot driveway. Do we have a specific requirement for driveway widths for this?
Um. That, that might.
Just the, there's something about, um, making sure where some vehicles can pass by, or. Sort of, at certain intervals. Depending on.
Well, if it's more than a thousand feet long, then you have to.
Right.
Do whatever you, yeah.
Cause I mean.
Yeah, that's.
Unless it's in the winter, and, and it's only plowed to eight feet wide, I think people can generally. Get around, but I, I think since we are looking to document what's there. What we're approving, I think it would be appropriate to indicate. What, what kind of driveway you have, I mean, it's gravel, but it's X number of feet wide. Um, what does the board think about? Traffic plan, I mean, I think that's like. Number of. Cars coming in and out, I mean, that's.
He does say, say that, I think what he said was fine.
Okay.
But you would like to see on the plan that the width of the driveways?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike Kinsley probably would. Way in on that also.
Yes, make sure that they can get their equipment.
I would make the fire chief, yeah.
I know he's, uh, Aaron Richard, the fire, uh, chief, Mike Kinsley. Um, is one of the deputies that, uh, but he has, uh.
Former fire chief.
Former fire chief, uh, building inspector from Hanover.
Yeah, he, he works for that.
Safety officer.
So Lauren, where does this go? Is. This, um, past your house, the driveway?
It used to be a campground, and that used to be the loop for the campground.
I s- so that's off your property, or further down?
Still on our property, but it's over.
What, what's he looking at?
Just, just like this stub of the driveway is only where it went. Cause it goes past the barn, past the house, and goes to like, uh, I'm not sure.
Oh.
Yeah.
Rivers down here. It kept going, so this thing looped around, and then went over onto the next door neighbor, who is a property, and then it came back here. So that's why it's, so this was the old campground.
Okay.
When these two parcels were, were the same.
Were, yeah.
See that?
Yeah, I see those.
Yeah.
When you said the two parcels were the same owners, so, oh, so there's a different parcel that's different.
This one that was subdivided.
One of that.
Oh, okay.
Was it, remember, he was gonna put six.
Marvin, Marvin Gerwin.
Yeah.
Gerwin, Gerwin, Gerwin.
Yeah. You know, he was gonna put. Well, he wanted to put six or eight houses in here. But it never.
So, uh, let, let's keep on task here, we're never. Um, so traffic flows on connecting roads, um.
I'm good with that.
We're, we're gonna say that, that's okay.
We don't need additional information, in my view, I don't think we do.
Okay.
Are we waving that, yeah, or, like?
Yes.
Okay, we're waving that.
The only part of the, part I question is, do you want to, um. See where you have, uh, snow power and snow storage area?
I wanna see where the snow storage area is, yes, please, if you could put that on your sketch, um, that'd be good.
Good.
We use a snow blower.
Uh huh.
We get a big tractor, the snow blower, and just blows the snow.
Um.
So not big plow piles.
I had kind of a couple of questions on the parking spaces. I don't count the number of spaces that you have, you, you indicate twenty-nine.
I got twenty-nine.
Really, where's?
You had to count up by the barn and the house. I, I, I.
I ended up with twenty-eight.
Oh, geez. Did I go crazy? Um.
But I I also.
Oh, I don't have. Oh, yeah, there is twenty eight because I don't have a twenty. Yeah, I I have twenty eight.
Well, you use the same counting method with.
Yeah, yes, it was. I don't. Yeah, no, somehow I don't have.
So so are the up at the the big house with the octagon, there's three of them that look like maybe they're in a garage. Okay, is that a parking space? This garage.
These are all, I mean, these are all spots. This is really a larger in the, you can see. Formerly they parked this way, so just to make it simpler, I put them this way, but. There's there's.
Yeah, the question is, is do they obstruct? The fire trucks, the way that they're arrayed. That's my question. And if if people were parked there, could the fire trucks get in and out? If they needed to respond to an emergency there. And I know you got sprinkler or so. But it's it's still getting it respond.
And so basically, you know, looking at the the appendix A, the onsite parking for the bed and breakfast um. Owner's unit needs two parking spaces and then each room and. Again, I don't know if this is has changed in last year, but the approval and what's on the tax card says there are fifteen. Units. So that would be one per unit. So that would be fifteen parking spaces for the unit. So a total of seventeen is the. The number I get.
That's that's including the owner's unit.
Yes, that's including the owner's unit.
Okay, because he's providing, I think, eighteen for the for the owner's unit plus. The sixteen.
I see twenty eight here, so um.
Yeah, he's especially if he his calculation show he needed twenty four and he's got twenty eight, so. We're happy. I mean, he does have to take one out for a handicap or no?
I I I think handicap spacious. Should count. I mean. I've been in towns where they do count and where they don't count. But yeah, and it's like, so what if you have a EV charger? Does that count? Or is that charging space and not a parking space?
Fortunately, I think we're in the out of the woods on this. I don't think.
Yeah.
I think he's.
Yeah, just just to have a HC sign on the closest space that will be a positive thing.
And safe pedestrian circulation. Are we waving that or?
I would wave it. I don't think there's any, I mean.
So it seems like it has. I mean, people can walk down the driveway if they need to, but there's no reason for them to come to. Unless they're, I mean, they're friends or the other people. But, you know, it it's a steep slope. Is there a trail that connects it anyway? I mean, just kind of informal trail?
Yeah, I think there's plenty of.
What what are we saying on that? Is that a yes or no? We're away.
Wave.
I'd say wave.
All right. So now site plan general. This is the same. So reference to a perimeter boundary survey.
We're waving that, right?
I think we need to wave that. Tax map and lot numbers, um that was included.
In in the well, in the past, uh the board has asked that on site plans, um all the uh butters. And their address information are included on the plan. Um but that's. You're getting up to the board briefing.
Well, he doesn't have. I mean, that could be me. Can you can you array it around here just on your inset map? Because you're gonna be modifying this plan, just put. You know, where people are kind of.
There are invisible butters on the plans. I mean, I guess on this.
Well, I mean, said, I think what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, just to just to array it around here. Um well, not through the river, but you know. Yeah, and across the street you could just put that and you know, just generally where their homes are located.
Okay.
People across the river aren't considered a bother. You know, they're not.
But if this was New Hampshire, it would. This is the Merrimack. It would.
Really, it's because it's a state boundary.
Don't care about us on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
The H L ends to the highway mark on the other side.
Which is interesting. That means that the uh people on the other side are have some New Hampshire property.
Yes, we would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I don't think they're getting taxed by one though.
Yeah, you should think about it.
A location map shown as an inset on the site plan.
We have that right here.
Okay. Uh the north. North point or North Arrow graphic scale data prep. Date of any revision, so.
North Arrow was the only one I found.
Yep, go to North Arrow.
And I didn't see a little graphic scale. Must have missed it.
It's just that.
It's twenty to one. Okay, that would need to be noted just because.
Well, he notes it in the.
No, it should be on.
If anyone looking at the plan should be able to not have to go through the file to find the application, define the scale. All plans should have a scale.
So so it should have a graphical scale.
Yep.
Is what we're talking.
I'm even happy with a note that just says what the scale is. I I don't.
But then you never know whether it's reduced or enlarged, so. I think the graphic scale is a requirement.
We're gonna assemble all of this on a list for this.
Yeah.
There's a list that Richard is working on right now.
And then as we spoke earlier, um. Uh you would also indicate a note on here that the base plan was from. The whatever it was from and then it was prepared by you or whoever is doing the preparation of.
And then also the the dates, um just so that we. Have a date that yeah, when this is done.
Uh zoning districts, including loan lines of demarcation.
It's all the rural district. So what we've done in the past is just ask for a note that says entire plan is within the rural district.
So it's a note on the plan.
Note on the.
The seal of any professional or firm preparing the site plan.
I think that your note is gonna.
We're gonna wave that.
Yeah.
The wave the seal.
Town of Lime Conservation Districts. Does this fall within any of the conserva? You mentioned the the.
Are gonna be steep slopes.
So those do need to be shown?
Uh that's up to the board if they feel that the. Uh seeing them is necessary um. I'm. My leaning is that they're not necessary because the. From what we're seeing on this plan, there is no no new development being proposed. Um it's all existing.
I can concur with that.
Yeah, I agree. Right, and you David, you said you were gonna check Axol for the parking.
As the this plan stands, there's no parking there. If that's something that gets added, then we have to to check it. But what was submitted to the board tonight, there is no parking there.
Okay.
And again, we don't know that the lot coverage numbers, and so we don't know if that could even be. Allowed. I mean, maybe already over. I I don't know the answer to that.
Right.
So you have an uh an existing development that's over the lot coverage. It just is grandfathered in and.
Right, it was originally approved. It's, I you know, I have no way of going back and saying now you need to. You know, yeah.
I wouldn't be there, right?
Okay, location area, dimensions of all existing proposed buildings, driveways, sidewalks, parking spaces, loading areas. Storage areas. Including um. Snow, open spaces, landscaping, buffer areas, large trees, open drainage sources, service areas, and easements. So I think we've already identified we would like to have snow storage shown.
Or just a note if he said he says he blows it. So we'll, you know, put a note about what you do with your snow.
Um and then we're also um. Want something to describe the driveway um in terms of what the the width of the driveway is.
And I think if you just did several points along it, measure it and just mark it on the the map.
Yeah.
I think that would be at least to me if that's sufficient for.
Yep.
Are there any easements that you know?
Just for the. Peter, the neighbor, to go down the driveway and he has an easement down this driveway to get to his lower field.
Feels to me like that should be documented.
Is that uh something that's in your uh? Your deed?
I'm not sure. I know that the. First day we bought it, Peter came up to me and said, I have an easement to use. I said, great, we have no problem with that.
But you never saw the ease with that, right? Should be on the deed.
Yeah.
So we're saying we want that on here or we don't want that on here?
Uh we can have a little note to say that this driveway is is uh subject to easement. Lot owner is. I mean, we don't have to say his name, but you know, owner of map three lot, whatever.
Okay.
So.
Thirty point two is gonna be the lot number. I forget the number.
He's been to the benefit. Owner of.
Four or five thirty point two is the. Thirty point one is a subdivision of the lot, so it's thirty one two has to be the.
So we've talked about showing uh the underground utilities.
And just make a note that it isn't surveyed or necessarily it's approximate location, so.
Uh the freshwater supply, I think that needs to be beefed up to clarify.
So it should say existing drilled well serving entire development or something like that instead of proposed drilled well.
Now, the the septic's plan has a proposed water supply from. Existing, so I thought you indicated the garage already had water.
It does. How it's it's currently is the waters coming from this into there. So the waters, right now, what's happening is the well goes to the house, goes to this one, there's underground to this. That's its current setup.
I think what we'd like to have is show the current and then show the proposed. Sewer disposal system um. So for the apartment that is shown. What's happening with the tiny house?
It's wandered right into the system, so it's.
And so that is it will be illegal. Um you need to have a separate plan for that. And I verified that with the state this week. Okay. Um that it would need its own tank, or this is what the inspector told me, that it needs its own tank and going into the. The the connection into the the each field.
Okay.
Um which also brings up the freshwater supply for the tiny house. Um I really think the board needs to see how. Not only, you know, the septic, the power and the um freshwater all need to be shown how that's being done. Again, I don't know, you know, it I would. It's something that uh, you know, I have Mike Hensley particularly to look at.
I did.
Uh I we have nothing from him.
So what's happening right now is right here is a utility room that has the electrical. Uh hot water, the cold water and the sewage. So. It was just like a ten foot thing. That's how it's connected right now.
But it's existing now.
It's existing. Mike Hensley came out, looked at it. He's like, yeah, looks fine, just add. So right now the connection to the septic. So it's unpermitted now. Yeah, I didn't realize. I I didn't know. I apologize.
So that.
So is the tiny home already in existence?
It's.
Yeah.
What happened is this was my fault. I didn't realize this was a problem. I had a. Um an RV, so I brought an RV and I connected the RV. And then um I listed it for rent. David sent me a letter saying, Lauren, you can't do that. That's not, that's not allowed. And I said, I'm sorry. So I sold the RV. So I sold the RV and then I thought, so I'm I wanted to do this process, so I started this process. But since I teach during the school year and I have the summers off, I bought a tiny house and I'm working on it. If it's not approved, I sell it. If it gets approved. It'll be used, but right now it's a totally unfinished.
And it's not connected.
It's not connected, so it's not connected, then that's so.
So this isn't like an airstream or an RV or?
It's a tiny house on wheels, so it's like a um.
Well, I mean, your permit, your your narrative says ten by thirty.
Right.
I I think a picture of it would be helpful for the board to have within that.
Well, the question is, is are you really gonna do it? If the state says you need to have a separate septic tank, are you really gonna do that?
I'll probably talk with the state and I mean, the the flow from that is so minimal. Or.
Well, it's like a bedroom. So my question was, is, you know, can your existing system handle the additional bedroom?
Yeah.
That's like. One.
And you know, this is long term. It's it's not really part of this, but. You know, the septic was put in thirty years ago. It's about time that, you know, I probably. I'm planning in my head to to have to. Have the next generation of septic. I've never had any problem on it. I made a indication that it will be a problem. But, you know, one thing I was talking to David with too is. As, you know, as we start to think about what is the long term goal of this property, is this going to be. Transit housing forever, or could this be, you know, maybe we do a conversion to residential on part of it. Still working with David, the next iteration will be what's that gonna be? And then that's gonna change what the septic demand is, so. At that stage, then it's gonna be, all right, let's redo the septic for the whole site. Let's make sure that all that's good. So that's sort of iteration number two, but I wanted to learn the process. I wanted to see how this works. And so we we tried to take a more bite sized approach right now. Rather than go for everything, which would be really hard for all of us.
Yeah, because I think if you add a bedroom. Then you have to prove the state record. You have to prove that the septic system is able to. Accommodate that. And if you don't have a plan, if there's no plan, then you have to.
If the state wants to have a plan for any additional bedrooms that you're adding. So I just did one today. The their septic system, they they have a three bedroom house and a four bedroom septic system. They are adding a an addition to the house for four bed for a fourth bedroom, not a problem. The state wants to see that fourth bedroom, but in their records, they know how many bedrooms. Was attached to that system. And so they want a plan for that.
For that system, yeah. So and I had a quick, just for my own information, that on the tiny house. It's up, it's off the ground. So then your pipe, the subject pipe has to run through the air.
Yeah, it's like a normal RV connection, so they have.
So it doesn't freeze in the winter or you don't use it?
No, the the they have. Heat tape or, uh but they they generally say that if you keep the wind off on them, you keep this this rigid insulation around them. The water, you have to keep the water lines heat taped, but you wouldn't necessarily have to have the drain lines. Because the liquid just goes out, goes down.
Yeah, well, certainly, but I just was curious because I never knew how that worked, but yeah, okay.
So we're looking for uh on the septic disposal, uh septic design for the tiny home.
Yes, it'd be a design.
Either a design or approval letter or something, right, from the state? Electrical lines and equipment, we've discussed that. We'd like to have those shown.
I'll also get just for the um. You know, the tiny house, how that's getting. Power and.
Exterior lighting um. There's kind of minimal information provided for the lighting, but.
Basically on the plans, the board in the past has wanted to have the locations of all the lighting marked on the plan. So if you if you have any lighting, you know, yet going forward. It would be nice to have all the exterior lighting marked and all the new or the proposed exterior lighting that you're putting on. And it doesn't have to be, you know. Exact what your is just lights here, 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 and here.
They are described. So the wall pack that you have, I mean, uh it looks like they're solar. Um it looks like they're gonna be put, is it on the western side of the barn? Because that's where the entrance is.
Um and just gonna happen here. Now, depending on what you said approved, uh we'll put them where it makes sense.
Well, no, but see, we need to know where you're gonna put them. That's part of like what we're doing is planning. And so I I I was. Worried that, I mean, and if. The lower one is covered by a deck that's above it, is it gonna get any sun? Because it looks like it's a solar powered thing and it's on the west side of the building.
There, the solar powered ones are just the foot lighting that you would mount like at knee level. So like you park here and then you walk and it it senses your motion and it just lights. It's just a, it's a really nice easy.
Right, okay, so can I? Right, okay, so can I just say something? When you have them and they're like that, they have, the snow sometimes gets up that high. You need to shovel around them so that they're gonna be effective or, you know, so you there's a problem that way on the Ledger Bridge. You know, come to find, duh, the the snow piles up and then those lights aren't good anymore, so. I just wanna caution you, it says waist height in your application, so waist height seem seem better, but. You still need to kind of make sure your your snow is cleared away, so that um. It's not shining into a snowbank and not on the path where the person is.
Fair enough.
So, yeah, so I do wanna know uh, where they're where they're gonna be mounted and, you know, where the illumination is gonna go. Otherwise, you know, so and I don't care if they're solar or plug in, I just wanna make sure that if you're providing that as a safety feature. That it's gonna actually work, and it didn't seem to me if they were on the covered by a deck on the west side, that they were gonna be really. Uh, that the solar was a good choice.
Okay.
So um, phone cable and commu- communication lines, we need this, so that was kind of discussed earlier. Fuel storage, distribution lines and equipment. Um.
Yeah, how.
So how is the, how are these new buildings, including the tiny home being heated and?
Everything's electric heat pump.
Okay. Um, and what about the tiny home?
The tiny house, same thing.
Heat pump?
Yeah.
Two pedestals, where they're mounted?
Yeah.
Can you show where the location is footprint of those pedestals?
And just also it'd be nice in the narration if it said that they're going to be heated or cooled by.
Okay.
Heat pumps that way.
That's cool. Uh, air conditioning.
Heat pump.
Heat pump.
You, is your service big enough to take the additional. Well, units that you're putting on?
The electrician is is evaluated and yes, and that's one part of the reason they'll add a new service in here.
To that one, but the service to the um, your developed area is all all good, the what the wires that you have and.
That's the indication from the electrician.
Yeah, and does um, these new units, are they having washer and dryers?
Yes.
And the tiny house too, or no? Okay. Do you have a common laundry and a big, yeah?
Uh, fire is protection and response plan. Um, is this the same as? What we've asked?
Uh, it it's a different, uh, uh, normally a um, fire protection and response plan is. Something that the chief will provide saying, you know, if there's an incident, um. You know, the the first thing he'll note is that the the main house is sprinkled, and that there's a X number gallon. Uh, system to supply that, and I don't know if there's uh, part of department hookups for that, for them to. Usually, you know, they plug it into the the uh, sprinkler system and pump more water in if you're, you know, you've used up. Um, everything, and then he will also um, note how he's, you know, what his plan is for any of the other. Um, buildings, you you'll look at a building and say, okay, this building has X number of square feet of uh, space. Uh, if it's on fire, we will need um, X number gallons of water, and this is how we're gonna get it.
So, so the town's fire chief is preparing that, or this is what Lauren had?
Well, that's what you need to ask the fire chief to prepare.
So that's Aaron Rich, so.
It's Aaron Rich, uh, he's the one that, you know, he knows all the calculation, it's not a a huge. Uh, you know, it's not gonna be the the page thing, you know, we have, you know. This this building will need X number of gallons, we have, we can supply that with our trucks, um, or we'll have to bring in. Uh, tankers from surrounding towns to um, shuttle water in, you know, that's.
Okay, and uh, we want that for members?
Yeah, I think Aaron should get it, yeah.
Yeah.
He's gonna be there anyway.
And you, it should, he should, you know, be looking at this anyway, because if there's a problem, he's the one that has to respond. And he should know what's on the property, so he knows, you know, it's it's just to your benefit to have him. Well aware of where everything is and.
Yeah, so he's not surprised when he gets there, right?
Rights of way and travel surface of all fronting streets.
Um, I'm thinking that this is so far.
From River Road.
From River Road that it's a, you could waive that, I don't see um, any benefit to the board to add.
Okay.
Right.
That would be my recommendation.
Um, landscaping plan, um. I'm curious with. With what is shown here is. Um, and and particularly with the lighting, i- is there an impact to neighbors, like where? Are the neighbors' houses?
I don't think so, I mean, from what what I know.
Those the son of itches are the the ones that would be, and and I don't uh, often know exactly where the house is, but I don't think.
I think it's.
Good distance away, yeah, you can't.
No, you can't see it, yeah.
Um.
Not to worry about the.
So are we gonna waive the landscape?
I I haven't been down there, so I don't know, I mean, it feels to me like. We're, we're getting a base plan here, but um. I don't know, is there any significant landscaping that? Would be a problem if it was removed in the future? Um.
I don't know what they do for drainage or if there is any kind of, I mean, you don't have any. Like drainage swales or rain gardens or anything like that, when this was done before.
Yeah.
They tried to do anything, maybe there should be, but um, yeah.
Well, as Lauren said, it's it's pretty flat, and then it drops down to the next flat areas.
Yeah, but the, I mean, there's usually some sort of, uh, most commercial places have landscaping. They have a flower garden here or a, you know, specimen apple tree there or something that.
Um, I do know that next to the house, it looks like you've got um, vegetation shown, I mean, is. Are there trees or is there solid vegetation?
This is at the blue hat, at the at the big house?
The big house, yeah.
Nothing will change.
Uh-huh.
That's the question.
No, I'm just wondering what is there now?
Grass.
So. Okay, cause there's a wooded edge here, shown on this, on the plan.
David's got it up on the screen.
Yeah. Looking at the, yeah, to Sonovich is is from the main house is eight hundred feet away. And then from the barn, and actually that that house is not even being used, so I'm not sure which one of the.
Uses the little trailer.
Is it?
One of those there, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, that's seven hundred feet from the.
And those trees are, you know, hundred feet tall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's put landscape plan on the waiver, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Drainage and erosion can recall.
Rich Brown, do you wanna see the those plans, I can share them, the the aerial photography of the build of the.
Um, I'm actually following all, I'm following along on Google Maps and.
Okay.
And and I see that there's a a a real big thicket um, to the north. So I think that's what we're talking about.
Yes, I just, I I didn't wanna exclude you, but I didn't share it on the the Zoom.
Oh dear, there, now, now I'm unmuted, I thank you for including me, I was looking at Google Maps and. On my own and and saw there's a quite a thicket there.
Okay.
Uh, so uh, existing and proposing grades of drainage systems, we're saying because it's existing, we would give them a waiver.
We're not adding any impervious area, so.
Right.
Okay. Uh, existing and proposed method method of handling water runoff, again, that's a waiver.
Yeah.
Direction of flow of the runoff through the use of arrows, again, we we're waving that.
Yeah.
Uh, location elevation, size of catch basins, dry wells, drainage ditches, swales, retention basins, we're waving that. And we're waving the engineering calculations.
Yep.
Building layout plan, um. Shape, size, dimensions, elevation and location of existing and proposed structures on the property, so.
Well, we have that on this line, we have that.
But doesn't have the the dimensions.
Needs to be provided, yeah, of course, floor area, lot coverage, building footprint.
So we want that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we just need to make sure it's zoning compliant.
Yep, ready. Show conceptual plans and elevations of all proposed structures and breakdown of the floor.
Picture of the tiny house, see what it looks like. No, you do, okay, send it to David so he can uh, you put it up. Oh, you did?
Oh, distance I didn't walk up to.
So, uh.
So that's really the only thing, and then we, I mean, the barn's gonna change a little bit with windows and doors. All right.
So Lauren, you bought that from somebody?
Yeah.
It was already, yeah, 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 I had a friend who was building one a few years ago. You know, yeah.
Wow.
She had it so that the the roof and hydraulically go up and down, so she could go under thirteen six, you know, under bridges and stuff.
Smart.
Um, yeah, the whole thing was hydraulic, she pushed a button and the roof would go up or down three feet.
So if you wanna go on the road, if it's ten feet, what, is it really ten feet wide?
It's whatever the legal width is.
Eight, eight feet, I think you're saying.
So, yeah, it must be eight feet.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to, I didn't wanna, since I didn't have the tiny house when I put it in the application, I didn't wanna say one thing and have it be bigger, so I put it in a larger.
Oh, okay.
You you need a fifth wheel truck to pull that down.
You do, yeah.
So how high is it, the whole?
The whole thing, it's just below whatever the.
Thirteen six, that's the, that's where all the co- the bridges are on the interstate and stuff.
Well, you can't go on parkways in New York.
Well, that's true, yeah.
They go down to nine feet.
Right, I know, but most of mostly it's thirteen.
That's when you have your bike on the car and you go like this when you.
Yeah.
Uh, so what are we saying about showing conceptual plans and elevations? Um, you had concerns about the um, the deck or whatnot of the. Of this, of this barn.
Yeah, I I think, you know, I I get it from what the floor plan was, it's just that, um, what I didn't see is the. The um, exterior stairs.
Mm-hmm.
And there may need to be a second means of egress, especially from the second floor.
We have casement windows in all bedrooms, we have all of that.
So you're allowed to jump out the window, that's your second means of egress, is that okay? When you're renting?
Yes, you you can, you always have a door and then a a door, and then you have a primary. So your primary means of egress would be the door, your secondary mean would be a a window with a s- with a opening. With a clear area of five point seven square feet.
And you're supposed to jump?
It's not that, it's not that far.
It, there's the hill goes like this and then the barn, so it's even from the second floor, it's not.
Even from the second floor, you're supposed to jump, okay.
It's only twenty feet.
That can't be right, it can't be right. Throw your kid out first and then you jump, or you tell the kid to jump into your arms, I mean, what, what, no.
You hope this, oh, my God, and you're upset.
That's 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 Mike's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Michael's jurisdiction, isn't it?
Well, we we wanna know if there's uh, stairway needed, and so maybe you need two stairways, I don't know, but it just doesn't seem right.
Or the lot coverage is going to come in to make sure that that building, you know, if you need more space, that we can. Try to.
So what am I? For showing conceptual plans, are we saying?
I think.
Stairway.
The proposed barn would have a deck off this end here.
Okay, that should be shown on the plan.
Okay, well, he shut, yeah, that should be shown on the plan, but it is shown in his um, the floor plan, yeah. Yeah.
And just the dimensions on that, just so that we can forget, that's going to be in addition.
Thank you.
That I'm gonna have to make sure it's formed to to sell anything.
And you're saying that even from the second floor, because of the topography of the site, there are places where you could climb out a window and it's not a drop?
Cause these, there's a drop, but it's the same, I mean, in in any apart, property management is something I've been doing forever, so you always have. You have the second means of egress is the window and you have a door, so in this case, they have the casement windows and you, you know.
How far of a drop is it from that window to the ground?
You break your leg, but at least you're alive.
Yeah, you're alive, you know.
That's not right, I'm sorry, that's so not right. Especially when you get to be my age, I mean, you know, when you're in your sixties.
One foot fall, you break your leg.
You can just, you can just trip over your cat and break your leg, you don't have to even jump out ten.
I I think that's beyond our our.
Yeah, Mike Hinsley can.
Purview, though.
Know, yeah. So you can't quite step out, but it wouldn't be much of a drop.
I'm gonna see you step out of this one, we're gonna go down and have a little.
I I don't know, I mean, when I built renovated my house, my contractor told me I had to have a. Or my architect told me I had to have a certain sized window.
Right, is it, are you renting this, is this a business property?
No.
No, it's your residence, it's a very different thing when we have people coming to stay here and they're paying their rent. To have a safe spot, and so I I I great for you, but I did the different standards for when we're. Creating rental property for me.
But there must be standard, I mean.
I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so we're down to federal, state and local approvals, uh, copies of each and all required federal, state and local permits.
Um, kind of, it hard, 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 you know, hard before the horse, because um. I can't approve the septic plans until the board approves the um, site plan, so, uh.
So a little lag time on that?
Yeah, but.
State approvals.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, you know, that you we have the for the barn, anyway, we have uh. A septic plan that's done by a licensed septic designer, um, there it, there may be some minor changes to get it through the state. Um, but usually there, no.
Well, those aren't really our problem, all we care about is that it's a state approved system, and it's gonna be the same general area, and that's fine.
Yeah, there will be a state approved system, and the same for the tiny house. And it's gonna have to get approved by DVS for the the connection in the system.
Well, we only have eight pages to go, so good.
We're done. Poor Lauren here, we put him through the wringer here. Well, so uh, can I just summarize what I think we've done?
Yes.
Uh, so on the uh, uh, certified mail list, uh. Um, you're just indicating that uh, you prepared this plan and you what and then what the basis. Uh. Especially, okay, that those are non-applicable, so we are uh, considering waiving the. Um, highway department review, the select board review, the conservation commission and the school board reviews.
Yes.
Right.
Um, but we do want uh, uh, fire and police.
Yes.
On the.
I think you're talking to Sean for a quick on that one.
Um. On the narrative, uh. The utilities uh, need to be um, shown in approximate location. Uh, the lot size footprint uh, information, um, floor areas, et cetera, that information needs to be approved. Uh, submitted. Um.
David writing these down?
I'm gonna get, he's gonna get.
Okay, copy.
Um. On the traffic and parking, you're going to uh. Uh, you're going to show the uh, uh, describe the width of the driveway.
Every handicap stop.
And handicap. Thanks. Uh, we are going to waive the uh, uh, traffic flows onto connecting roads.
Yep.
Um. Parking plan again is to show the handicap space. Uh, we would like to have uh, snow plowing, um. Uh, snow storage described or shown. Um, we're going to waive the uh, pedestrian circulation.
Yep.
We're gonna waive the boundary survey. Uh, we'd like to have you show on the uh, the. Uh, we'd like to have you show on the, uh, the uh tax map. And uh, names and addresses of the butters on this uh.
Insert.
Insert set. We need a graphic scale. And notice to who prepared the plan.
Yep.
Zoning districts.
Just a note saying. Apparently within the rural district.
Yep. Yeah, we hit the graphic scale indeed.
Okay.
Okay.
And. Uh, we're waving the. Professional seal.
Yep.
Or we could ask for, are you a civil?
I am, but I don't.
You don't wanna stamp your own project?
We're not asking for any kind of. Engineering professional expertise on this, we just wanna have a clear site plan. That's not necessarily. You know, accurately placed, but clear enough so that we know what we're approving and what we have. Now and what we think you wanna have approved and built, so that's. Yeah, and fortunately you're in the, you should be able to do that.
Town of Lime, uh, the conservation district, we're gonna waive that. We wanna see um, um. Uh, the snow plan, driveway easement, uh, indicate the driveway easement for the adjacent lot. We want to show, have the utilities shown. Uh, the underground, um. Show current and proposed water system, uh, you need the septic design for the tiny home. Uh, need the electric and um. Fiber and communication shown. Uh, show the location and type of lighting on the plan. Show and describe the uh, fuel storage distribution. Um, that's your heat pumps. And um, that applies with the air conditioning. Uh, we'll want the uh. Fire protection response plan from the fire chief. We're gonna waive the rights of way and traveled surface of funding streets, we're gonna waive the landscape plan. We're gonna waive, um. All of the drainage and erosion control items.
And engineering calculations.
And engineering calculations.
Yep.
Building layout plan, we still want that. Um. And we want uh, the uh. The, the plans to show the stairway for the uh, the apartments. The, the two apartments you're creating.
Stairway in the, the barn.
The stairway in the what for the deck?
In the deck.
And uh, on state approvals, we need the tiny home uh, septic plant.
Yeah.
So I have a question, do we need, do you need to provide emergency lighting? On any of these? Or is it just resi- regular residential lighting, because you have a commercial situation?
I'll talk with our. Our, for my life safety guy and ask.
Okay, cause I didn't know if you needed to have like your regular lighting and then it's. Everything fails, you know, emergency lighting, cause it is a, a building.
You know, do you have a generator?
Backup generator?
Yeah, you're in New Hampshire, Co-op, is it?
Ever Source.
Oh, you are. You don't lose it as much.
This past year was a challenge, wasn't it?
File for a, forty-two percent rate hike. Ever Source.
Play it with direct energy.
Live community power.
Well, they wanna pay me like three cents a kilowatt for my excess solar.
So, um, do you have a dumpster? The dumpster located?
Oh.
Here.
Can we just put that on your plan when you, um, you know, jazz it up a bit, okay, great.
Under the uh, site plan general map.
Yep, dumpster, and mailboxes?
We just have one mailbox, I asked David if I could put more mailboxes, and they said, you can't, so you don't.
Well, you wouldn't have uh, ad- addresses for those mailboxes, you know, if you have inside your house and you wanna put. Mailboxes for the visual, visual units that you are. Uh, but people should not be getting, you know, but again, they're, they're not. These are transient orders, they're not something that they should be. Right, if they wanna get mail, then they get P O box.
Emergencies, I mean.
Yeah, it, well, he, he doesn't know if it's needed, but just in the event that it is, like, you know, to have the emergency lighting shown.
I think we needed if you have a backup generator.
Yeah, yeah, because when the power goes out, the emergency lights go on fueled by the generator or battery pack.
Well, this last times, the generator just powers all of them, so.
Right, but like this last time, um, when we had the big.
We had the big line fiber outage. During that last power outage was because the generator at the line in wouldn't start. And they are, they power the node for uh, what line fiber, and so. Because their generator was not working, yes, so.
Backup lighting.
Where you can't guarantee that the generator. You should.
They're supposed to check themselves once a week.
Yeah, but if it doesn't start and nobody, you know. Checks it, you know, we have a generator out back here that kicks on every Wednesday around noon. But if none of us hear it, none of us think about it.
It doesn't send a text message?
It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it's. That no one knows.
We should put an alarm on.
I'm sure there's a, don't you have a maintenance contractor?
I do, yeah, but the, but he brings up an issue, you know.
Yeah.
It doesn't work.
Well, I mean, in your house, in your case, when it doesn't work, your lights aren't coming on, you know, like, hey, how come my generator's not coming on?
Right, right, but if it hadn't been working for like three months. Because I haven't been paying attention to the Thursday afternoon for twenty minutes.
You don't have a little light? Cause there's a green light and a red light that looks kinda yellowish. So if it's not happy, it usually has the yellow light on.
Can we, can we proceed? So. It, it um. Appears that we don't have a complete application.
Yes.
Um, so. I, I, I would like to do what we can do to. Help. Expedite this and not have to start from square zero.
What, what you can do is vote that it's, uh, the application is incomplete.
Okay.
And then, um, you know about how long it's gonna take you to gather the information, um, zoning board, um. Can, I, I knew this was coming up, so I've already scheduled you on next month's zoning board, um. Uh, but they're, they have a heavy load, that you're the fourth. Uh, case for them, um, but I'm gonna try to get you in uh, for the eighteenth of next month, if that works for you. Um, and so we try to get that done, if you're doing all the, the updates. And then, um, once the board votes that application is completely, you should vote to continue the hearing. Um, to a time and date specific, so figure out when the, the next hearing, the next meeting. Uh, would have to be after the eighteenth of next month, um, assuming that the zoning board can get. Stuff that I would suggest, the uh, second meeting in August would be probably. A, a likely meeting, um, for the board. And then just continue to seven o'clock on that night. And then you don't have to reapply, you don't have to renotice, so there's no more cost for. Um, you're doing that, so you, you're, you know, your application is dead, it's just, it's incomplete, and the board is saying, we're giving you time to. Go back and complete everything that they want.
And David Larnes, you have to go through the state for the septic system, right?
Right.
Could that be done in, in that timeframe?
Uh, I, I don't know how long, um, you know, I'll just have to take this tiny house off. I have a choice.
For now, I mean, you could do it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, what I would do is just, if you can write me a letter, it gets, it'll go in the file saying you withdrawn that part of the applications, it's fine.
Um, you don't think you can get a state approval by August?
Well, I have to, I have to redo the septic for the entire in.
Well, you, you, I don't think you know it.
If, if you have enough. But if you have enough capacity.
Yeah, but.
But this was a design thirty years ago, a design thirty years ago for a building, isn't gonna be, isn't gonna be designed. To today's standards with one more building.
Right, cause I think, from what, I think from what. You've told me before that you have to prove to the state somehow that that system is big enough for that extra bedroom.
I hired a, I hired an engineering consulting firm, they did the analysis, they said if I took this off of it, then it would, it would. Meet to today's standards, but then I have to do a septic system for this one, and then this one stays thirty years old, so.
You couldn't put that one on the new system you're installing?
No. So it's, that's why these things sort of.
Yeah.
I, I wanted to do the small thing and then get to the big thing, because this is gonna be a hundred thousand dollar septic system.
Yes.
So. Crazy.
Yeah.
Crazy.
Yeah.
And, yeah, cause you have no plan for that thirty year old one. Really?
Well, these are the.
I have the plans, but they were, they were thirty years ago, it meant the requirements.
Oh, so you do know, okay.
But today, it, you couldn't, you couldn't build the same size system and have it work. And since you, you're adding something to it, they're gonna say, you need to bring the whole system up to.
Right. Yeah, cause, yeah.
That's why it's.
Well, it's good you have a.
So even the, you. Even if you're.
That's the state.
Yeah, it's not, no one's fault, it's, it's.
Yeah, the zoning says I have to make sure that it's going to meet the.
Yeah.
The um, septic regulations.
Uh, one request I have, so it costs me three hundred bucks to print these, can I send them digitally to new plans?
I think we need to have at least.
Not a fan.
Yeah.
I like to really be able to see it, I have a, a laptop, it, you know, it's not that big.
Make do with one set instead of ten, ten.
Well, who looks at theirs before and marks them out? I do, so.
I have no problem, um.
One for Vicky, and then one for everybody else.
Those like thirty bucks a plan?
Is there three pages and ten sets?
Okay, well, we don't need the second, we don't need detail on the old septic system, or, or, you know, what we're, what I want is just your site plan. Um, I don't need. You don't need to do the second.
The one page.
Yeah, just the one page, cause it shows the whole site, and you're not.
The requirements, uh, according to the zoning is at a one to twenty scale.
Right.
And this is one to forty.
Right, we, I think we would, then we talked about waiving that.
Okay, great.
Well, did we, I, I.
No, you talked about, we talked.
Graphic scale.
Graphic scale, I mean, I don't really think that. I mean, I don't want this, cause it really doesn't show me, and you know, this whole thing, I don't really care about.
That's the one to twenty scale.
Yeah, this is what I care about is the site, is we're, you know, so this would be one sheet would be fine with me, um.
So you're happy with one to forty?
It is, yeah, I mean, he's a clever fellow, he's gonna be able to put things in so that I can see clearly. Um, that this is the existing grill well serving the entire development, and you know, he's gonna figure it out. And, yeah, you can change this, yes, I, I'm fine with that, I mean, does anybody, is anybody like really getting a whole lot of extra bang out of this? No, no, so, I mean.
So then how much would?
So I think we, we do wanna waive the uh, twenty scale.
Yep. Um, yeah. I'll put that on the waiver list then.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Where would that be?
I'm sorry, I'm pretty old school and, um. I don't have a very big computer and it's. This is a lot easier for me.
You know, the first thing I do is I take the plan, I set it out and, you know, I go through the checklist and I start circling things with a, a marker. To make sure that, that's how I know what's here and what's not.
You wanted to give us two copies of this plan as amended for our discussion? One for you and one for Vicky, is that enough?
Well, I, I would like, I, I would think the board members should get.
Yeah, well, Lauren, Lauren has said ten would be a hundred dollars, a hundred, if that's okay, it would be a lot easier.
Members, I need at least one, um, the tax assessor is going to wanna see one. And, and so, and then there'll be one that will be signed by Rich that goes in the file.
Yeah, so ten sounds like.
Yeah, that's.
Be great, thank you.
And, and are we hundred percent sure that the only reason he needs to go to the Z B A is for that variance for four, four, six?
As submitted, everything is, um. But when you start adding a deck and adding a walkway and an extra parking, I don't know.
See, that's the thing, is that I don't want you to have to go twice to the zoning board, I think it'd be nice if you only had to go once. So is there a way to get to that?
Do the lot size calculation, coverage calculation first.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, like, I don't want this to have to drag on forever and ever, just to, you know, but that's.
But you can measure all the buildings, right?
Well, yeah, but I mean, okay, so how fast can that get done, so that, when do you need to do the noticing for?
Uh, next week.
Okay.
Because I am out, um, the, the first week of July, and so I have to have all my notices and everything. And like I said, there are already three. Um, that I'm working on now.
So can you guys talk about that, what the deadline is for Lauren, get you the information so that you can review it and know whether.
You know, we're. Adding that information, you know, the. Um, we're really pushing, because like I say, I still have, I'm working on three other applications already. Um, and so having to, um. Go through it and do a, a, a fourth one, we're, we're pushing what I have planned for. Right now.
Okay, but you guys can work that out, otherwise I don't think it's. Like, this hurry up and wait thing is, if you have to go to a second zoning board meeting isn't a great idea, so. Um, should.
So if you can do, if you can do the lot coverage calculation and see that you're well under. Even if it, even if it's not exactly precise, that you have some room.
Yeah.
Then it makes sense to go to the Z B A next month, just with asking about that two unit conversion.
Exactly, on the other end, if it's close, then you might wanna push off going to the zoning board, you can get everything at once.
Right, the, the next meeting after, um. Next month is the fifteenth of August, which is again, if, if this board, um. Continues to the twenty-second of August. Um, that should be time to get to the zoning board, uh, they usually try to make the decision that night. So, uh, we would have the decision.
So we can keep our tentatively scheduled continuance of this hearing for the.
The twenty-second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, do we need to go all the way to the twenties, the second meeting in August, could we not do it the first meeting in August?
Well, um. I don't, again, I, I don't know how long, you know, if we can get to the zoning board or. You know.
The eighteen.
Next month.
I'll, I'll work on this until I give you everything you want, even if it's taking me all night.
Four nights.
Because I still have to do, you know. Once we, you get those calculations, I have to do the, the lot calculations, you know, taking out the conservation districts, that doesn't take too long. Um. And then we'll know if that's. And. Um. You'll need to give me dimensions of any additions of parking that you wanna put in, um. Yeah.
And that's, and that's hoping that the Z B A will see him on the eighteen, or be able to fit it in on the eighteen.
I'm, I'm hoping the other cases are not overly complicated, um, and like I said, would, since you did approve. Um, Aaron, um, I'm gonna work very hard to get him. At that meeting, and uh, we'll have a, a three member board.
Can I ask about the, these parking spaces, um. Up by the main house that have changed the location. Um, such that it's. It's decreased the turning radius. Do we anticipate that the fire chief is gonna say that's a no-go?
I have no idea.
Or maybe you, you want, can. You wanna talk to him about that, I, I, I don't know what the fire department wants. I don't know what the fire department wants.
You can always put the, put the spaces where they're religion, originally shown on the plan.
That's what I was thinking.
So I think he's got plenty of room, it just, it. Lauren may need to modify based on what the fire department says, but I don't think it's a stopper.
Yeah, there's a little space there.
I mean, that, that does increase the, the site.
Right.
The, uh, coverage that's being used, but. I'm just wondering if, if it's that size because of the fire department to begin with, cause it.
Yeah, I don't, there's nothing in the file from the fire department, so it would be a matter of, you know, having them.
It's about forty feet wide right now.
Yeah. Oh, fire departments typically like lots of room.
Yes. Well, you, you get, you have a volunteer department and the, the people are not, uh, used to driving trucks, or most of them are not used to driving trucks that big. And so maneuvering, um, having extra room is.
Well, side swiping all the vehicles there, I mean, we might be saving lives, but a lot of people could be very inconvenienced. And we can do something about that by planning so that the fire department can get in and those people's cars are safe.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
And.
So David, do we need a motion to, uh, continue this?
Well, we, I need a, of, a motion and a vote that the application is incomplete.
Almost that the application is incomplete.
One second.
Do we have seconds?
Oh, second.
Okay. All those, uh, in support of the incomplete application? All those opposed, okay?
And then you, uh, have to have a motion to continue the hearing to, um, whichever date, um. Nine, ten, just giving yourself an extra two weeks. Go to the, the, the second meeting in August, but that's again, that's between you and the board.
So what happens if we continue to the first meeting and then it doesn't happen?
Uh, then you can continue to the second meeting.
Why don't we do that?
Why don't we do that?
Okay, so you'd wanna continue to August eighth?
Yeah.
You know, so I, I make a motion, we continue the, read to August eighth.
Second, do we have a second on that?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor? Uh.
I just, I can clarify, it would be at seven P M, this is gonna be time and date.
Okay.
So.
I'm not gonna be here August eighth.
Okay.
Funny guys.
Where are you going this?
And who seconded the motion?
Wedding, yeah.
Well, you all spent a lot of time and I really thank you, this is, I really appreciate it and I know it's hard to tell people that they gotta go back and drive. Or, I, I, you guys are doing it with your hearts in the right place, I, so thank you.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Well, we're overtime, we get more paid than that, cause we're overtime.
Well, you've got a, uh, a big project that, uh, certainly helps, uh. Provide additional housing in, in the valley, so it's a nice. I accept that motion.
Um, Mark Voland, your report assesses a rise in air force, it's just on the transmission clock, it's not on the supply side.
Oh, yeah, well.
Live community power will compete on the supply side, so we won't be able to do anything about the forty-two percent.
Yeah, I've always said for years, you know, as, if Everstore starts losing. Their money on electricity, they will just keep raising it.
Exactly.
You know.
We have adjourned. We have adjourned, yes.
Just giving out.
Thank you.
These are extra copies.